Board of County Commissioners in our session. Commissioner, do you want to lead us in the prayer and prayer, please, sir?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for everyone in this room, everyone that lives and resides in Franklin County, those who visit our shores, be with us in our decision making today, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, if I may, I need to let, so it's on the record, at the moment, we're having problems, internet problems, for the live stream of the meeting. So what I've directed everyone in the front office to do is they get phone calls, direct them to log into Zoom, and everyone can watch the meeting through Zoom. Mr. Ross is going to go ahead and record the meeting, and he will post that up as soon as the meeting is over, okay?
Okay.
But it's internet issues, and there's nothing we can do about that, alright?
Okay. Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
Sub move.
Sub move.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masses, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Next on the agenda will be public comments. No, payments of the county bill.
Sub move.
Back it.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masses. Any discussion on that? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That pass unanimously. Public comment.
Alright, Commissioner, so I have a few callers on the line. I've asked about three times this morning that if they want to speak, that they raise their hands, either by, if they're on the phone, by star nine, or if they're logged into a smart device, just click raise hand. I still only have two. But as an abundance of caution, I probably will go ahead and select everyone that's on the list, and they could let me know if they want to speak or not. Just be advised that there's a second sometimes, when I'm muted from when they actually talk. So I will, to the top of the list, I will put those that have actually raised their hands, and they can go first. Ms. Pam Tullis, you are unmuted. If you would unmute your own phone, and you can, you have three minutes. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, ma'am.
Yes.
Good morning, my name is Pam Tullis, and I'm here as the president of the Franklin, Friends of Franklin County Public Libraries. Since Wilderness Coast has lost its IT department, I understand the county has been negotiating with wild and outside vendors to provide IT services for both branches of the library, East Point and Carabelle. Many patrons rely on the libraries for their computer needs, and at this time, both branches are experiencing computer issues. The staff has been able to find workarounds for these issues, but these are only temporary fixes. I would like to request that the county finish the negotiations sooner rather than later, so that library patrons continue to have the computer access they have been accustomed to having. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tullis. Thank you so much.
Public comment.
Next is, I'm going to allow the talk, is phone number seven, seven, zero, five, seven, eight, zero, zero, two, five. Please unmute your phone, I think star six, seven, seven, zero, five, seven, eight, zero, zero, two, five. You may speak. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners, this is Alan Pfeifer, president of Concerned Citizens of Franklin County. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, sir.
This month, I advised you of CCF's research, in which we discovered potential lawsuits and judgments against and involving Alliant and officers of that county, officers of that company. Some of those lawsuits appear to involve failure to perform and fiduciary irregularities. Allegations have been made that we somehow falsified that information. Several of you know that that's not how I do business. I was also clear to say that my internet search was incomplete. I stated, "We are unaware whether or not the county ran background checks on Alliant or Jim Coleman. They-he may be squeaky clean, we don't know." However, a couple of hours of searching the internet and providing the following links and topics that we feel require explanation. I asked one commissioner if a background check had been made, and he was unaware. This is concerning. Certainly, no voter should, no vote should occur until and unless someone in Franklin County government is willing to state they have vetted these companies and individuals, and they have satisfactory answers. My question to the board is simple, has anyone been directed to follow up on that troubling contractual information that we uncovered? I ask that you put on hold further consideration to the sizable taxpayer obligation until all legal concerns over Alliant and its personnel have been successfully resolved. Second, the CCSC did an analysis of the management services agreement between Alliant and the county previously provided to the commission, which we had thirteen specific concerns that we believe are important to the success or failure of the agreement. We have considerable concerns that the county took the cheap way out, negotiating a complex legal agreement that would normally require the expertise of an attorney specialized in this kind of work. To spotlight just one area of concern, one only has to look at six point four of the agreement that would seriously compromise the county's ability to terminate the agreement. It clearly stated in the agreement that under the clause, "Ownership of the work product", that any proprietary operating procedures, protocol, information systems, operating data, computer databases, reports, and other non-public proprietary business systems or information owned by BMS shall be and remain the exclusive property of BMS during the, during and after the term of this agreement. The net effect of this clause is that a great deal of the above-mentioned items may be in fact be proprietary to BMS. As described in the agreement, it's possible that Weems would be in a position where they could not function immediately following a termination of the agreement without great effort and luck on our, on our part, and could become involved in protracted litigation. I consider this clause unreasonable, as we don't know the extent to which Alliant will be using their critical proprietary systems. It could well be virtually the totality of the operating systems at Weems. Can you assure the public that this is a non-issue, has been well considered, as well as the other twelve items mentioned in our letter to the commission? I await your response, Commissioners, and thank you.
Alright, sir, thank you so much. So now we're going to go down the list here and see if this person would like to talk. So I'm going to unmute six, nine, seven, nine, zero, six, zero, eight, five, oh, six, nine, seven, nine, zero, six, zero. Would you like to address the board? Star six to unmute your phone? Six, nine, seven, nine, zero, six, zero. Okay, I will... Move down the list. I will unmute... Let me try, let me try that number again. Ask to unmute. Six, nine, seven, nine, zero, six, zero, if you'd like to speak. Alright. Apparently not asked to unmute. Five, I'm sorry, eight, five, zero, nine, two, seven, two, three, three, four, would you like to address the board? If you would, star six on your phone? Ms. Tullis already addressed the board, Mr. Pfeifer already addressed the board. I have an Amy here, let me... Here. I have it, someone, someone logged in as Amy, would you like to speak and address the board?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. Let me, um... Clear up some stuff here. I apologize, Commissioners. Don't follow protocol. Talking. Okay, let me go down, I have one, somebody logged in, Ms. Brenda, Ms. Brenda Collin, I've muted you, would you like to address the board?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I just agree with getting answers to the questions from Alan Pfeifer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. I have someone, Be Stork, let me, I think I know who that is, but... Be Stork, would you like to address the board? Alright. David, I don't think you did, because you're on there because of the livestream, and I'll, one more person. I got a, god, you jump around. Dee Mashburn, would you like to address the board? Alright. Well, I think Commissioners, I got everybody on the list.
Got everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Public comment? Public comment? We're going to move on, and then I guess, if anybody, why we having difficulty? I feel if somebody called, we can check them later.
Well, everybody knew to call in for the, if they wanted to participate, they knew they had to call Zoom.
Right.
So they couldn't use the livestream. Livestream is people that just want to view the meeting and that do not want to participate. So, once you close, public comments, you're good for the day, for this meeting, sir.
Okay. We moving on, next on the agenda will be the direct, Department Director report.
Okay, if I, if I may, Commissioner, and I apologize, Howard, I apologize, I'm trying too many things at one time, I'd like to move Pam up to the beginning, because I have Mr. Pierce on the line, and I am going to ask Mr. Pierce to unmute star six on his phone, and Pam has some issues, and there's some issues, there's that, the Island View item that Mr. Pierce wants to talk to the board about this morning, so he says he wants to do it under your report, in case you have some input on that. Alan, you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, sir.
Okay, we, we're going to switch around and put emergency amendment first.
Mike, want to go first, or you want Pam to go first?
I guess we should let Pam do her report first, and then after that, you and Pam could start talking about the, the Island View project, and then I have some items in my report I want to bring up while you're here, also.
Okay.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Excuse me, I have two action items this morning, requesting the board's approval and signing of the Community Emergency Response Team Grant, the CERT grant, in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Sub move.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by two, Commissioner Jones, I'm Bert, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Second is the request the board's approval and signing of the Hurricane Loss Mitigation Grant in the amount of one thousand, one hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, and I'll start advertising for that mitigation. I will be going back through the old applications and taking a second look at those, and seeing if any of those meet the criteria that maybe we can get the BCA's up this year and get more than just three houses fixed.
Sub move.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masses. Discussion, tell me a little bit about the program.
Sir?
Tell me a little bit about that program now.
The Hurricane Loss Mitigation Program, that is the, that program that we've had, I think, for four years now, where we can do roofs, shutters, one-out swing back door.
Okay.
And I do not think the city applied, so people in Appalachia can apply, but I think Carabelle, I think Betty Webb applied for the city of Carabelle, not sure.
So the people in Appalachia, Colorado can apply, do you?
Yes, sir, I don't think the city applied for this, this year. They didn't last year.
And you got the dates, you know the dates, with the start and cutoff?
Actually, once this, I can start advertising this week, but this grant has to go back to be fully executed, but I'm going to go ahead and start the process of advertising for people to submit their applications to my office. And I'm going to go back through the boxes and boxes that TRES has of past applicants, and take a second look at them, and see if there's any way that we can get some of those houses that didn't fit the criteria in this year, because the state has changed the way they do the cost benefit analysis, don't really agree with it, they're saying our wind speed's a hundred and twenty here, which we all know is not so, we've sent them the documentation, but that's the way they did it last year, and I only was able to get three houses, and that was with signing the waiver saying that, you know, we would do, the house had to be, if you wanted shutters, it had to be below thirteen thousand, if you wanted a roof, it had to be less than twenty-four something, so we only had three houses that met that criteria last year.
Okay, pleasure to the board.
This is relative to the Hurricane Michael only, or do you?
No, sir, no, sir, this is a, this is a grant that comes out every year. This, part of this money comes from when you pay your insurance and you see that catastrophic, part of that goes to this, the state has, legislation obligates this every year, and when the, the county applies, not all counties and state apply, then they decide, you know, how much they're going to give you, and they send you an award like we got today, and then we start the process.
I see, very good. Great.
Chairman, so I'm clear, so you're saying because the city of Appalachia did not apply, people that live within the city can apply straight to the county?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that's, that I did not know, that's very good news.
Yeah.
Very good news.
Pleasure to the board.
Sub move.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner, where you?
Yeah, we already have.
Oh, we always get it? Yeah, that's right. Sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. That's right, that was in the discussion, sir.
Yes, sir. Alright, can I tell Mr. Pierce to go, is there any information items you want to bring to the board?
Only thing is, the new update on Delta, they expect her to be a Cat Three when she comes through the peninsula.
Sure enough.
All indications as of right now, shows are going in at New Orleans, but we will feel some effects from it, starting Wednesday, should see wave actions in, up to three foot by Friday, we should have wave actions of five foot, of course, that's on top of whatever else you already are getting out there. So Alligator Point, we will start putting information out to Alligator Point, you can expect, you know, over the weekend, shelter in place, or expect not to be able to get back in when you leave home.
How about rain?
Rain, right now, they're saying that we have very little chance of getting a whole lot of rain. Now, again, you have to realize, this, she's still way out, she hasn't made it in, but they are expecting her to build again once she gets inside the Yucatan.
Yeah.
But they're saying as she makes landfall, they expect it to be a Cat Two, but we all know that that's, they don't have a crystal ball, that's the best guess.
I'll tell you, not with both hands on the wood, because we, and you guys will see later in my report, we do not need any more rain right now, and I'll explain that a little later, but thank you.
Let me ask the question, do we all, is we good with them signings on St. George Island, about the swimming and this kind of stuff?
You do have red flags right now.
Yes, we got the flag.
You don't have double, but you do have a red flag, but that would be more of a Fonda question.
Okay, we need to, well, make sure they get their advice over there soon.
We will put out, we will start our alert Franklin, telling them that, you know, there is rip current that they, it's advised not to go swimming.
Thank you. Ma'am, can you coordinate your alert Franklins with potentially double flagging at the same time? When you're, when you're alerting the hazard potential conditions of our waters, going to that level and letting the public know, isn't it appropriate that we also automatically double flag our beaches because of just that information that goes out there? I know it seems like an, maybe an overreach, but safety is always almighty.
Again, that would be a Fonda question, I can put out whatever you want me to.
Okay.
I do know that, you know, they have a little issue with it over in Carabelle, I've heard the discussion about that beach there, they claim they don't have rip current there, and they don't like for Fonda to put the flags up where they can't go in. Again, I, I don't know how the water comes through there, I don't, I don't, I don't get in the water.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Okay, Alan, it seems like it's your turn. Good morning.
Okay, alright, good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all from this distance, and my first item is something that Pam and I have talked about, and admittedly, it's something we've never done, and I said jointly, Pam and I have never offered or proposed to the board to do what's called a Project Four Twenty Eight, or Program Four Twenty Eight, but in this particular circumstance on Island View, I think it's worth trying. The Program Four Twenty Eight, that's a FEMA, FEMA Program Four Twenty Eight, is, is a program where the county and FEMA agree on a, on a cost for repairing a facility, in this case, it's Island View we're talking about, and that we're capped at that, so the risk to the county is, if the repairs came in above the obligated amount of money, we couldn't go back and get any more money. The benefit is that if you do a Four Twenty Eight, FEMA allows the county to receive some of that money upfront, so you have cash to start the repairs, and then it's a reimbursement base, but you get money upfront to begin the program. And I understand, although I don't want to hold, I don't want to be held to this, is that if in fact the money comes in under budget, then whatever is not spent on Island View, the county can spend on other projects. Now, I don't, I don't, I was told at one point, but I don't want to, I just mentioned that to you, that's a possibility, but I know for sure that if you have an over budget, FEMA does not give you any more money. So on projects like Island, like Alligator Point Drive, or C thirty, where you have engineering standards and safety standards, I would never recommend, and I'm sure Pam would not either, we would never recommend you doing a Four Twenty Eight program, because if in fact the engineering costs came in higher, we have to protect public safety, so we would have to spend the money and then argue with FEMA about the cost overrun. But in the case of Island View, it's a park. We, we, we have a PW right now that's obligated, and I'm going to just say for about a million dollars, Pam can correct the record for exactly how much it is, but we can design a park for that million dollars. So we're, in my opinion, we're pretty sure, we have pretty much a safety net, that we design a repair to that facility for the million dollars, we go out for bid, if somehow the bids come in over, we just negotiate before we were the bid, so that we know the bid contract is whatever money has been obligated by FEMA. So, because we can, we can reduce the scope of the project on Island View to meet the money available. The Project Four Twenty Eight, or Program Four Twenty Eight, requires that we keep the facility in the same style of what it was, so it has to be a park, you know, we can't turn it into a parking lot. But as long as it's a park, if we have to cut down the number of parking spaces because the money's not available, that's no big deal, we have to shorten some of the boardwalks or other, other things in the park, that's no big deal, as long as the function of the park remains, then we can work within the money that FEMA has made available. And the reason I propose that we do this for Island View, is that Fonda's budget doesn't have, you know, a half a million dollars of cash in his budget to get started repairing that, that park. He would have to apply upon either the county's emergency funds, or some other source of funds, in order to get the cash up. Now, we get reimbursed, but still, you need that cash initially, and the county's going to have a lot of cash outflow here, because my next item is going to be Alligator Drive, and there we do need to move forward with that project, and so we're going to have to use cash in the county reserves to get Alligator, Alligator Drive started. So with Island View, it's my recommendation that we at least try to see if Four Twenty Eight program is still available to us, and use it on Island View, because I believe it'll give us the cash and the flexibility to get the park built back sooner, because we'll get some cash started than otherwise we would do. So my recommendation, and I'm going to read this statement, because I worked with a man named Jason Wrestler, and Jason Wrestler is a DEM contractor, similar to the group that we had, if you remember the group, and all of a sudden my name, Frank McComb on Alligator Point, the Frank McComb group that came down from the state, helped us on Alligator Point, well, this Jason Wrestler is with another contracting firm, paid for by the state of Florida, and he's available to help Franklin County go through this process, so we have some guidance from DEM through one of their consultants. Basically, what we have to do is have a motion from the board to have Pam contact, and Pam, I don't know who the PDMG is, but hopefully you do, and I don't even know what the initials for PDMG stand for, but it should be somebody in DEM. So we have Pam contact the PDMG to ask for a fixed cost offer for the PW for Island View. Apparently FEMA should have sent us an email or written communication asking whether we wanted a fixed cost offer, and, and Jason can't find any evidence that they did, so we believe there's a window for us to apply for this Program Four Twenty Eight for Island View, and what we do is we ask the PDMG to send us a fixed cost offer, and that fixed cost offer then will be the maximum amount of money that we will have available to us for Island View, and I really believe we can, we can modify and rehabilitate that park for whatever money FEMA makes available to us. I just think it's worth the risk, because otherwise, we're going to have to wait for Island View to be repaired, to actually have Alligator Point out of the way, and reimburse, C thirty out of the way and reimburse, because I don't believe the county has enough cash to do all these major projects all at the same time. So that's my statement, that I think we got to try the Four Twenty Eight program, but I'll defer to Pam for any additional comments she may ask.
Okay, Alan, the way I understand it, if we're going to go with the Four Twenty Eight, and you're talking about changing the design in that park, that will have, that project will have to go back to FEMA to start all over again.
Yeah, I have to go back for, for, for a scope work change, that's correct, and Jason said he would help us with that, so yes, I understand that, but I think, even without the Four Twenty Eight, Pam, we were going to do, we were going to do a mitigation on some of those components, but you're, you're correct, that, but I believe, I mean, Jason told me he'd help us rewrite the scope work and get it through the system, so I don't believe it'd be that long of a delay, but obviously, I don't know.
We have mitigation in there, are y'all planning on keeping that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The mitigation portion that's already put in there for that park, are y'all planning on to keep in that portion?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because if we turn that down, we won't ever be offered that again.
No, 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 we're going to keep the mitigation in there, yes, that's correct.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we go ahead and engage this Program Four Twenty Eight, and apply for a fixed cost offer, and let's press on there.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bert.
This is relative to Island View Park.
I have a question first. Are we going to put this out for bids once we do this?
You have to.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we, we would have Jason help us, and, and Duberry help us with the design and the scope of work, but you're correct, once we have the scope work down, and FEMA approves the scope of work, we would go out for bids for the construction, that's correct.
That's fine, yeah, I just make sure, you know, okay.
It needs to be a fixed cost bid.
So, so, Ms. Joe?
Go ahead.
We'll have an idea of what we're going to do, Alan, before we actually submit for this Four Twenty Eight?
Well, no, we're, we're going to get from FEMA, I'm sorry, I spoke over you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, we, we're going to ask, FEMA already has a PW obligated with the amount of money, and I presume that whatever the obligated amount of money will be the fixed cost offer, but I don't know that, but the language that Jason gave me was, we need to ask the PDMG to provide Franklin County with a fixed cost offer for the Island View, and I presume it's going to be the same amount of the PW, but I don't know that until we get the offer. Now, we can always reject the offer, somehow I'm way off, and we, we get, you know, a percentage of the, of the PW, we can always reject the fixed cost offer, but we need to ask for it in order to get it.
But we'll have a scope of work and all of what we want to do, and kind of an idea of what that cost will be?
Well, no, sir, Pam has already done a good job, we have a, we have a scope of work and a cost for, for the damages that were incurred by Hurricane Michael, so we know what FEMA is going to give us, based upon what all the work that Pam's already done, what we would then go back is, and see that how much it costs to repair the park to its pre-storm condition with this mitigation that Pam's talked about, and then we, if it's a million dollars, then we would say, okay, let's see if we can design the new park to be a million dollars or less than a million dollars, and then we would accept the fee for the Four Twenty Eight program.
Okay, so even though we apply for it, we don't have to accept it, is what you're saying?
That's correct, that's correct.
You know, they, that happened in eighteen, it's twenty, just about twenty-one, they ain't going up, so you, y'all put in, y'all, check that, make sure you put it for that.
But Pam, I mean, Pam has talked, the money she has presented to them, if you get the right contract, go work with us and do right, not try to go way out beyond, it should be enough money to make it nice.
You have to do a fixed cost contract.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, just like we did when we put the roof on the sheriff's office and the roof on my building, the contract has to be written for that fixed cost amount.
Right, and in the case of Island View, gentlemen, we, we, I say this, you know, the park, the park was overdesigned in some capacity, because the state of Florida had so much BP money, that they put in some frills and such that were, were destroyed by Hurricane Michael, that we're not going to replace. One example is that there was a lot of landscaping, that was going to be hard for Fonda to manage anyway, and maintain, and, and I mean, we're talking fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars of landscaping, well, we're not going to replace all that, I mean, one, FEMA's not going to pay for it. it, but there was a lot of cost associated with the initial building of the project that was not necessary, and would be difficult for us to maintain. So we're going to put back a park that is going to be within the scope and the ability for Fonda's parking lot to maintain.
You ain't going to put back the tarjumah hole?
Well, we're going to, it's going to look really nice, but it won't necessarily have all the same things.
Is he talking, the plants across the street ain't going to live? Matter who took care of them, it's just not an area for something to grow like that they put in there. You could take, maybe Pam's still going, yeah, still not going to grow. And native plants are not going to grow over there.
Did we ever, Mr. Chairman, did we ever get a second, Commissioner Boats?
Not yet.
I did.
You seconded?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me, seconded by Commissioner Masto, go ahead, discuss.
Ms. Pam?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, though, are we looking at delaying this for another year or two going this route?
I can't, Commissioner, honestly, I can't, I can't answer that, because it will have to go back in front of the FEMA grant manager, that's what the PDA, that's what that person is, and we'll have to tell them what we want to do, because they're the ones that actually sort of write the scope of work of what you're going to put in there, and what the costs are. So it may change the amount, if you're talking about, you know, not putting it back the way it was, then they can come back and say, well, we're not going to give you a million dollars for something that you're not going to put back exactly.
Is it something that they would, so you're saying they've obligated funds, or Alan said they've obligated the funds, so if we ask this, are they going to de-obligate those funds, and then go through the whole process again?
I can't answer that. That would be something that someone from FDM could answer.
That's a very important question.
Yes, I know. I do know that it will have to go back in front of FEMA. Whether it'll take a year or not, I don't know.
Right, that's why this Jason, right. Yeah, I wouldn't recommend this on our own, but just like we had Frank McComb assist us getting stuff done on Alligator Point, this Jason Wrestler's a contractor paid by Florida. I agree with Pam, I wouldn't want to do this on our own, but I'm taking the assumption that this Jason Wrestler, who is paid by the state of Florida to reach out to counties to get Hurricane Michael programs moving, and that's, he's a PE, and he reached out to us, I presume that he actually has value, and that he will be able to get us the scope work rewritten, and get it through the system faster than we do on our own. So that's another reason, I think we should try this. But in answer to your question, it's my understanding, and again, neither Pam or I have ever done the 428 program, but the obligated amount of money, Commissioner Jones, is what they sort of base the fixed cost offer on. So if we accept that, if there's any difference between that and the PW, maybe they de-obligate a little bit of money, but they use the damage disaster, the damage report that's already been written, they use that as a basis for what the cost, the fixed cost offer's going to be, but we don't start over, and we don't have to renegotiate what it's going to cost, because they've already obligated an amount of money for Island View.
Okay, so one follow-up. So based on what you've said, if we get a fixed-based offer six months from now, and we don't like it, we can reject it, we still have the obligation of what we have presently to move forward?
That's my understanding, that we have 30 days to accept the fixed cost offer, whenever we get it.
I would like for that to somehow be a question we can ask, before we start down this road, to be honest with you.
Well, why don't you make that, just because I, I would say make that contingent, I can call Jason Wrestler, maybe through the meeting, I don't know if I can get him or not, and ask him that question, but make a contingent upon, you know, whether Pam writes the letter or not, it doesn't matter to me, I just hate, Commissioner, it's, you know, we're already two years out, and I don't want to lose any time or money on your behalf.
I understand, and that's not what I'm trying to do either. I just, it just doesn't seem as certain as it probably should, to me, but anyway, that's just me.
Well, I agree we've never done this before, but I assure you, neither Pam nor I are planning to have the county lose any money over this thing. I just, you know, if you want to make a contingent upon clarification, Jason Wrestler, or the PDMG who Pam talks to, that we are not losing the obligated funds by going down the 428, that's fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I will say, if it is, the follow-up on Commissioner Jones, if it is going to take longer, we need to do a really good explanation to the public. We need to explain to them exactly what we're doing, why we're doing this, and yes, it causes a delay, but in the end, it's better for the project overall, because there's a lot of people that are upset that we have not done anything with Island View Park as yet, so that's, I mean, what I'm asking for is secondary to what we need to find out now, but it still needs to be done, in my opinion.
All right, any more discussion?
So I'll amend my motion, that we look into the cost of this, that Commissioner Jones suggested, and that we just make sure that we have this all covered before we go forward with this motion.
You amend his motion?
Yeah.
What about you?
I amend.
Okay, the first and the second been amended, already both, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, they're passing none of them.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I will go, I'll contact Jason Wrestler and ask him that question, and Pam can do, Pam can do the same thing with the PDMG, because I think she may know who that person is, and I don't, but I'll contact Jason and ask him this also, and then I'll send you all through Michael an email with the answer I get.
Okay, my work.
Good, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I just would like to encourage, if there's any field trips that we can take with FEMA staff, or other officers related to this Island View Park, I'm available to be there and to accelerate that in any way. Thank you.
And Jason had offered, he's based in Tallahassee, and again, he's a PE, he has already offered to come down to the site, and it's important for him to come down to the site and look at it himself, so he understands what we're getting into. I've talked to him several times about it, but no, he's willing to come down, Commissioner, so I think whenever that's arranged, you'd be certainly advised to be there.
Good, thank you.
Okay, now, when y'all do have it advertised, just in case other commissioners want to be there more than one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm going to be there.
Okay, so make sure it's advertised, so everybody can be there, if you want, if you choose.
Yes, sir.
That'd be very good.
Okay.
Okay, all right, do you want me to go to the next item, then?
Is there anything else for Pam, Alan? Can, you done with Pam?
Well, if she wants to listen to Alligator Drive, she can, I mean, she doesn't really have any, I mean, she may have some comments, but I'm going to go to Alligator Drive then.
Go ahead.
That's a big deal.
Go ahead, Alan.
Okay, all right, so I almost...
Pam, we ready for the storm, and we storm-ready for everything on this event.
My standard answer to you is, if our citizens have a plan, we're storm-ready, other than that, our office is.
Okay.
So we'll start, like I said, we'll start pushing the stuff out, and I'll start, as we start into our conference calls, and when I get done with them, I'll give you an update.
Okay, as usual, keep me posted. Okay, Alan, go ahead.
Okay, all right, so it seems somehow, it seems appropriate that whenever we talk about making progress on Alligator Drive, then we have a storm that potentially comes along and wipes out our hopes and dreams, but I'm going to presume that Hurricane Delta does not make a substantial impact to us, I just say that presumptively, because it better not. At this point, though, we have a PW, PW 1152, has finally been obligated for Alligator Drive, and I don't have the number in front of me, but it's approximately $5 million, is the same amount of money we talked about before, and it's the same scope of work, but finally it's been obligated, it's in the Florida PA, and so now, finally, almost two years later, we are able to move forward in repairing a road that the citizens of Alligator Drive have been waiting for, for four years, because this road was damaged by Hurricane Hermine in 2016, and we never got that finished because of Hurricane Michael in 2018. So this is where we stand. The money's been obligated, but because the bid that we opened by Anderson Columbia over a year ago, we need to do, put in writing to Anderson Columbia, whether they want to honor their bid. This is an important step we have to make, because FEMA says that the county can follow its bid policy. Well, our bid policy is a very short, two or three paragraphs, and does not deal with bids this old, it has no comment in there. But fortunately, Dewberry and their bid documents that they sent out with all bids, has a statement in there, that if the county provides a written letter to a bidder, asking them to hold their bid that's more than 90 days old, then the bidder can respond, you know, and say, yes, we will honor our bid. So we need this in writing, I've run this by FEMA, and they say, look, just follow your bid policy. Well, our bid policy is, write the contractor a letter if the bid is more than 90 days old, so we need to have the board write the Anderson Columbia letter. Clay Kennedy has a specific verbiage that's in the bid documents, it's just a simple sentence, and I forget what section it is, but he confides Mr. Schuer with that simple sentence. And we write Anderson Columbia a simple letter, asking them, you know, are they going to honor the bid that they submitted, I guess in August of 2019? But again, I'm not sure of the date of that, but sometime August or July of 2019. And if they say yes, then we can issue a notice to proceed, and they're ready, and then they can start construction and mobilization whenever they're ready. If they say no, then we are in an unforced position, we have to go out for rebid. Now, neither Clay Kennedy, nor I, nor anybody associated at Alligator Point, I'm sure, wants us to rebid, but we're in a dilemma with this amount of money, we can't risk FEMA challenging our acceptance of a bid that's more than a year old, and over the original bid price. So if Anderson Columbia can't honor their original bid, we're just stuck with having to rebid this thing. Hopefully, that wouldn't take any more than 90 days, but we'd have to advertise, give the bidders time to collect bids, you know, and then us to receive them, and to open them, and to review them, so it could easily add 60 to 90 days if we have to rebid. Clay has already reached out to Anderson Columbia, and they are currently working with all their subs to get a verification on whether there is a price increase or not. So if the board can get a letter out this week, Anderson Columbia is already informally working on a response, and I'm hoping that by next board meeting, we will have a written response back from Anderson Columbia about whether they can hold the bid or not. Again, that's pushing them a little bit, because they have a lot of subs, and this is a very expensive project for everybody, but if we can get the letter out, a simple letter asking them, according to the section in the bid documents, you know, that we write them a letter saying, can you honor your bid, or will you honor your bid, and all they have to do is write it back and say yes or no, and then we go from there, and I hope we can get that answered by the next board meeting. So that's my comment, that we need to have board action to write Anderson Columbia a letter based upon the verbiage in the bid documents that Dewberry provided them when they got the bid, asking them, will they honor their bid that they submitted?
Well, that'd be a full year, though? You'd say?
It's over a year old.
One year old.
Hmm?
One year.
One year.
Yeah, from 19, August to 2019, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we write a letter to Anderson Columbia, and asking them if they'll honor their bid. I would also add to that motion, that we have a first paragraph that just introduces a summary of the bureaucratic procedures that we went through, that took us so long to get to this point. So I'd like to make that motion.
Christian, well, we can certainly do that. Clay has been in contact, and I've been in contact a couple times, but Clay's been in contact probably once every two months with Anderson Columbia, so they're not in the dark about what's going on. They are well aware that FEMA funding was the holdup on this thing.
Okay.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burt.
Second.
Second by two. Commissioner Masto and Parrish, any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none.
Good, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And Mr. Schuer, if you will get with Clay Kennedy, I don't have the address, or the officer who should receive the letter, Anderson Columbia, but he has all that information. And, yeah, that'll be great. All right, I have one other item, this is item 10 on Michael's report, and I'm just going to bring it up for clarification. Item number 10 on Michael's report talks about the $200,000 of beach re-nurishment funding, design money for Alligator Drive, and I just want to reassure the board...
How about I just read it, Alan, then you could comment after that, that'll help.
Okay.
So to page eight, Commissioners, item 10, I guess I'll work backwards with the list I have for Alan. The county received a $200,000 DEP beach's long-term funding request application for Alligator Drive. This funding will assist with beach and offshore surveys, revised design permitting easements, establishment of erosion control line, and bidding phase service. The DEP also extended the submission date to tomorrow, October 7th. This funding will allow the county to move forward with a beach re-nourishment project to protect the road. Commissioners, I gave the impression that we've received that money, and Alan's going to tell you here right now, we're actually applying for that money, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, that's the distinction I want to make. We're applying for the money that could be funded by the 2021 legislature, so we won't know until May of 2021 whether we get the money. And I know the issue is, well, we don't want to start spending any money down there until we know we have a maintenance program in place. But in this case, gentlemen, we are just asking for the money. This is the same $200,000 we asked for in the 2020 session and did not get it, so we're making a new request. If we get the design money in May of 2021, we will have at least a year of design work, and obviously, at least a year before we get construction money, which the legislature would also have to appropriate. So in that year is when we would negotiate and finalize, you know, who's going to maintain this thing. But if we don't, one, if we don't request the $200,000, we'll never get it, and if we don't get it, we also don't have to worry about any future maintenance problems, because we're not going to be able to do a design. So this is really the first step. There's no point in arguing about maintenance costs if we can't finish the design. So the request here, I think, is fairly risk-free for the county and for the residents of Alligator Point. We didn't get it last year, I don't know whether we'll get it this year. I believe in my, another earlier report, I mentioned that DEP had changed the rules on their scoring of beach re-nourishment, so I, you know, we're at a battle, this is an important project, and it's possible our representative will help us get funding this year, but we tried to get it last year, and it weren't awarded it, and all I can say is, let's try again, and if we get the $200,000, then we can start talking to the people in Alligator Point about how are we going to fund the maintenance thing, but without the design money to be, get, to provide to the county, then there is nothing else to talk about, because there will be no beach re-nourishment project.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Alan, if we apply for this money, and we get this money due to design work and surveys and all, as you previously stated, does that obligate us to do beach re-nourishment?
No, not, well, no, it just puts us in the position that we can then ask for a specific amount of construction cost. Now, Commissioner Parrish, we already received one black eye with DEP 15 years ago, when we got done with design money and finished it, we also got construction money, and we didn't construct the beach. So, you know, it's not good to go down the process and not finish the project, but in this case, if we are awarded the design, and I think, it won't hurt us to do the design, but we're not obligated to.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, we've been down this road a lot of times with the people over Alligator Point, and they don't want to pay an assessment. To put the match, to make us a fund, to match, you know, if we do a beach re-nourishment and gets blowed away, FEMA's only going to reimburse you 50%, so there has to be, as we all know, there has to be a mechanism in place, that you create an escrow account where you got 50% of that money saved up, so if we put, as we talked earlier in board meetings, that we agreed to fund $4 million to do a beach re-nourishment through some of our BP funds, but only if the people of Alligator Point are willing to establish a fund that will make up 50% should it wash away. And obviously, the way this road keeps washing away, that beach is going to wash away, and if there's not a mechanism in place to do that, so if we go forward and apply for this money, and we do all the surveys and everything that you're saying that we need to do before we could even move forward, you know, we need to find out if they're going to do this, because if the people down there are not willing to establish an escrow account, or MSBU, or however you want to describe the project of getting the monies there to match FEMA's monies, then we're, you know, I'm not in favor of spending $4 million, but, you know, if we go forward, we go forward with this, and don't complete the project, then you're going to give us another black eye with DEP, as you spoke earlier, correct?
That's correct, no, you're exactly right.
Mr. Chairman, I just know that the folks at Alligator Point would certainly be open for a good, solid, informative education about the need for beach nourishment to protect that road, and this gives us that opportunity to build up that design and provide lots and lots of facts, so I think this is a real good step in the right direction, to inform the folks at Alligator Point, and I'm in favor of it, and I would like to make a motion that we move forward and authorize this application.
I got a motion on the floor by...
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke. Do I got a second? Do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish, discussion. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, let me just vote in for a second. Yeah, I, I, Commissioner Parrish, I hear you loud and clear. This is the dilemma we're in, that I, there is, there is going to be a point when we have a, you know, a discussion, a frank discussion with the residents of Alligator Point, because the Board of Canisters has the legal authority to impose an MSBU, you know, with guidance from the, from the professionals on this thing, and the Board has never imposed anything. We've always worked cooperatively with people, and I hope we continue to work cooperatively with people. But at some point, you're exactly right. If the Board is gonna spend four million dollars of our store money, matched by four million dollars of the state of Florida's money, that beach has to be maintained. And it just may come down to a very tough decision if we can't get a cooperative solution. But the Board, and I defer to Mr. Schuer, the Board, in my opinion, has the legal authority to impose a maintenance fee on there if that is the last resort that we have to do.
That's exactly what I was finna say. We, now, we go through this and we do all that, and the people are not willing to, if they get them a vote, and they voted down, we are just stuck, county.
They gotta work with us, but we work with them, and we have put a lot of effort into helping people on Alligator Point.
I feel confident they will. I do.
And don't really, only the solution to fix that is go take a dredge, go offshore, and dredge the dirt back up like they do in North Carolina, South Carolina, and put a big wall of dirt up, and it'll last for twenty years or more, and you know, that's about the only solution to, to take care of it. Is put your dirt back up that's out there in the guff.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Alan, if, if we followed through and were able to do beach restoration, put it down, wouldn't that be considered an engineered beach and something that we could apply for FEMA funding to put back?
You're gonna get hated.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Commissioner Parrish is talking about. Once you put, the first beach is on the cost of Franklin County and the state of Florida. Once you put a beach back there that, as you say, is engineered and designed, then it becomes a man-made structure. And then, next time it's damaged, FEMA will pay to put it back. But the first designed beach, FEMA does not participate with. But after that, you're exactly right. If a hurricane comes through or a presidential declared disaster and damages the beach, because we'll have an additional documentation, an initial design, so we know how much sand is there, and then theoretically, after the storm, we can document how much washed away. I'll, I'll give you the caveat, though, that, that FEMA only comes in to help us with presidential declarations where there's erosion. They don't help us with the annual erosion out there, and they don't help us with a storm that doesn't quite meet presidential declarations. So there could certainly be events out there, Commissioner Jones, for which FEMA says, hey, that, that storm wasn't big enough. That's not our problem. That's why you need that maintenance money.
Okay.
And, and, real quick, Mr. Chairman, and, and also, Alan, if FEMA, if it washes away and FEMA comes in, they're only gonna pay fifty percent of the cost.
You're right, you're right, you're right, right.
That's the whole point of having this fund, as you spoke, to put it back if it's not a declared disaster, which we know that there's been no-name storms coming through and wash out that road down there, and it'll do the same to this beach. But FEMA, if it washes totally out, FEMA's only gonna give you fifty percent of the money. The other fifty percent is on the county or on the landowners.
That's correct.
And you know, the spirit of this motion we have on the table right now also currently, I think, shows honor to FEMA that we care enough about this four million dollar beach or Alligator Drive rebuild that they're gonna be doing to, to just look at the next future protection of that area. So I think it's a, a real good way to keep moving in favor with FEMA as well.
I mean, you know, if.
Commissioner Boat, I, I, I would say I hope so, because I have certainly mentioned the need for beach nourishment in front of FEMA a lot. I'll be honest with you, I was hoping that they would put that into the design.
Yeah.
But they reiterated the statement that, that they already, we already know, is that if there's not a beach out there designed, then they're not gonna put one in their project, and they wouldn't do it.
And I, if they want them, they're willing to put up, do their part, fine. But I'm not full-charging the whole county for that one beach, because you, you got beaches all over the county, and they, they subject to the same thing. It just ain't happening, but it might. But the whole county don't live there. So you got to look at that, too, and, you know, people just got.
Yeah, but Mr. Chairman, let me add on to that. You're exactly right. I mean, using a, a sort of, a, another example where we have a bad erosion is Dog Island. Dog Island is an island itself is washing away, and we have more house, well, I shouldn't say more. We have as many houses on Dog Island that have already washed away that we do at Alligator Point. And if Dog Island had enough property owners out there and wanted to do a beach renourishment project, it might be eligible. But the sad news about Dog Island is there just aren't enough property owners out there who are at risk right now. But Dog Island is washing away as rapidly as Alligator Point is.
Yeah. Okay.
About cut in, too.
Yep.
That would have. But I got a motion on the floor. Do I get a second? Second by, any more discussion? Already both, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, they're passing none of them.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your confidence there.
I apologize. Don't go anywhere. Got a couple more. Item seven?
Wait, Mike, 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 hang on. Let me just, what you need to do is have the chairman sign the documents that Mike Nambroski sent you, and then he will submit all this to DEP. There's really nothing for you to do, because the chairman's signature, so it's safe to give them back to Mike Nambroski.
Okay, we will. Making sure, I'll make sure it's taken care of today, because the deadline is tomorrow. Correct, yeah, okay. Item seven, the county received an amendment to Department of DOE's Department of Economic Opportunity contract that increases the total contract amount to seven hundred and fifty thousand. These funds, these DOE funds will be used to match the Alligator Drive project at six hundred and fifty thousand, and the County Road Thirty Eight project at a hundred thousand. You have any comments for that one, Alan?
Yeah, thi, thi, this is, this is basically the, what, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars awarded by the two thousand, I'm sorry, the 2019 legislative session, and we knew we needed some money for Alligator Drive, so I, we initially had the contract written up with only Alligator Drive identified in the DEO contract. Now that we have a, a PW for a C-30, we're amending the contract to add C-30 and, and the balance of the legislative allocation of a hundred thousand dollars. It's possible, Commissioners, that if Alligator Point comes in a lot less and we don't need all the money, that we can add a third amendment, or a second amendment, and add another county facility. But at this point, I want to make sure that the county match is available fully for Alligator Drive, because it's such a big project, and then the balance left over for C-30. But it's possible we could do another amendment once those two projects are out of the way. There, there is a timeline on paying the DEO money, and I can't remember what that is. I think it's June of 2021, but I think if we get started, we could, we could get another year extension. So we need to, we need to get these things two going, and then we'll see where we stand in the future.
I'll make a motion to approve the DEO amendment and authorize the chairman's signature on that.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke. Second by two, Commissioner Jones and Parrish, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, they're passing none of them.
Commissioners, if you would skip over to page seven, item three. Commissioner Parrish participated in a Triumph Gulf Coast council meeting where the county, county's application funding requests for one point zero five nine million for the, I meant, one million fifty-nine thousand, let me say that correctly. Airport fuel farm was approved. The total project is estimated at two million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand. Therefore, an FDOT one point two million dollar grant, along with twenty-five thousand dollars from the county, will be used as matching funds. If the board is going to accept the funds, there's a term sheet and a grant award agreement that requires the chairman's signature. Sir, Pierce, Mr. Pierce?
Uh, yeah, this is something we've negotiated, spoke about. Mr. Schuer's reviewed the documents. I've given them written, or given them assurance that we have enough paper trail that the FDOT one point two million dollar contract is the contract that we're currently underway, in fact, almost completed, and Triumph is aware of that, that, that we're using a match that is almost completed at this time, and they're aware of that and are fine with that. If, and I certainly recommend we sign this thing. It's been a long time coming. As soon as we get this signed up to them, then I'll submit documentation to them. Hopefully, they'll approve AVCON then to finish the design, and then within a few months, we can go out to bid and get some improvements at the airport also.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, they're passing none of them.